Welcome to the City of Everett Planning Commission. Could we have a roll call?
Acting Chair Laverne.
Here.
Commissioner McGinn.
Here.
Commissioner Yanisak.
Here.
Commissioner Finch.
Here.
Commissioner Tisdale.
Here.
Okay, has everyone had a chance to review the minutes? Does anyone have a comment or correction?
I didn't see any. I move we approve the minutes as read.
I second that.
Commissioner Tisdale?
Yes.
Commissioner Finch?
Yes.
Commissioner Yanisak?
Yes.
Commissioner McGinn?
Yes.
Acting Chair Laverne?
Yes.
Okay, now it's time for reports from commissioners, if anyone has a report.
None.
None for me.
Nope.
Okay, thank you. Staff comments?
Thank you, Alan Giffen, Planning Director. Last week, the City Council did approve the Planning Commission's recommendations for the amendments to the Riverfront Master Plan without any changes, and so that was unanimous vote among the council members. And so the next stage for the riverfront would be to begin work on the street, the Riverfront Boulevard that will run through the property, and they should then start some piling work for building foundations later this summer as well. So then also, we will not have a meeting in two weeks on the 21st, but we will meet again on June 4th. That's all.
Are there any members of the public that would like to make comments not related to today's agenda? If not, we'll move on to the first item, which is the Shoreline Public Access Plan.
Good evening, Karen Stewart, Environmental Planner. Tonight is a public hearing on the Shoreline Public Access Plan, and this is what staff presented to you back in December. And we have been doing some procedural items such as a CEPA environmental review, where we had a 14-day public comment period on the changes, the updates to the plan, and did not receive any comments. And then we've also done the notice to Department of Commerce and have prepared a resolution for your adoption of recommendations, which is Planning Commission Resolution Number 19 hyphen 12. But before you look at the resolution or address the resolution, please hold a public comment period. Any questions about the proposed changes to the plan?
I haven't received any speaker comment forms. Does anyone want to speak to the Shoreline Public Access Plan? I guess if the public doesn't need to speak, want to speak.
Perhaps making a motion to open up the public hearing just would be appropriate, and then if nobody's speaking, then you can close it.
Okay, so we open and then close. Okay. Would someone be able to do that?
I'd move that we open the public hearing.
A second.
Commissioner Tisdale?
Yes.
Commissioner Finch?
Yes.
Commissioner Yanisak?
Yes.
Commissioner McGinn?
Yes.
Acting Chair Laverne?
Yes.
So if there are no comments, we just closed the public meeting, hearing, so we need another, I know we need another motion.
I've moved to close the public hearing.
Thank you.
Second.
Commissioner Tisdale?
Yes.
Commissioner Finch?
Yes.
Commissioner Yanisak?
Yes.
Commissioner McGinn?
Yes.
Acting Chair Laverne?
Yes.
And just to point out a couple of the findings that are in your draft resolution here. So the Shoreline Public Access Plan is one of the implementing documents for the Shoreline Master Program. It is not required by the state, but public access has been an issue for many years here at the city. So back in 2003, the initial plan was adopted, and it has not been updated since then. So we had an opportunity, the state allowed us to use $5,000 of the grant money with this update of the Shoreline Master Program to make sure that the document is up to date, and the projects that have already been constructed are reflected as such in the table that's in the front. And then there are a few extra additional projects that have come forward over the years that are now added to the Public Access Plan. So someday, if there's funding, those will be available to be constructed.
I have a quick question. You may not be able to answer this, but would you have any speculation as to why there hasn't been any public comment on that? Is you think maybe just because it's not very controversial, or are there no real identified stakeholders other than just the public generally?
Good question. So we've been working with the Shoreline Advisory Committee that contains the stakeholder members, specifically the Port of Everett is a major funder of and provider of Shoreline Public Access. The Navy also does not necessarily provide public access, but they're at the table for those conversations. And all last year, in 2018, we held a series of meetings and talked about the Shoreline Master Program as well as this Public Access Plan, and so we have worked through the issues with the advisory committee.
So probably most of that input came in through that process already?
Yes, yes.
If there are no more questions, I guess we would entertain a motion to approve this resolution?
Move to approve Resolution 1912?
Second.
Commissioner Tisdale?
Yes.
Commissioner Finch?
Yes.
Commissioner Yanisak?
Yes.
Commissioner McGinn?
Yes.
Acting Chair Laverne?
Yes.
Thank you, Karen. So moving on to item number two.
Good evening, David Stallheim, Long Range Planning Manager, and here to talk about the rethink zoning project and focus in on residential, and provided you some background material and kind of walk through a few of the issues. And tonight is meant as a kind of a workshop to identify a few things and kind of get some discussion going, and discussion or reactions or direction, whatever comes your way as part of this. So first is kind of getting, stepping back a little bit about what rethink zoning is. And there's a couple balls in the hopper right now that really affect how we look at zoning. And just as a little bit of context, our zoning code dates back to 1989, so it's 30 years. And but things are really changing, and so some of the big things that are coming up are, you know, the light rail coming to Everett in 2036, going to start that process of light rail station planning. Housing issues, big issues, the city's going to put together a housing strategy. We're working on a new vision for Puget Sound Region called Vision 2050, and so we're looking at some new growth forecasts or allocations to the city. Then there's issues of code complexity, how complex the code really has gotten over these last 30 years and what we can do. So as all those little balls spin around in a little cyclone there, what we're looking at coming out of it is probably two different things. One is a code update really over this next year and a half of dealing with some aspects of this that we can address. And then some of it might be future plan updates. And so the next review of our Comprehensive Plan Development Regulations is due in 2023. So as we look at some things like light rail station planning and some of the new grow forecast, some of the, what we do in the next year and a half may set the stage for those conversations that will really happen a couple of years down the road. So as we look into some of the things, those might be a little bit later tasks that we take on. So as we look at, you know, some questions for the zoning, as we're looking at housing affordability, how does the zoning affect housing affordability is a big issue, not only in our community but across the state. How does it accommodate new growth? Does it accommodate the new growth that's being allocated? Does it support light rail? So as we think about light rail coming to our community, do we really have the zoning in place for the light rail? And as this commission was involved with the Metro Everett, that was a big focus, making sure we have the zoning in place to support the light rail within Metro Everett, but we have three other stations that in our planning area to address as well. And then how does it sync with economic forces? The, you know, things are changing rapidly, and so how does our zoning really sync with the economic forces in our community? And then really, the code update part is really, has our zoning become overly complex? Is there other things that we can do to make it more user-friendly and simple? So stepping back, one of the things that the City Council just did in following your recommendations is that we changed land use designations citywide, when we went from 28 different land use designations down to six. And so we had two residential classifications, we had single-family and we had multifamily. Single-family areas are areas that are presently developed as such. Home ownership was predominant within that area. There could be other housing types that would be allowed. It's basically low, lower stories in height and lower densities within the single-family areas. Multifamily, looking at long transit or employment, or sometimes it may be a transition to higher intensity uses, commercial or industrial, light industrial areas, wanting to have a full range of public facilities and services, open space in parks within walking range. And there's a real wide range of heights that are allowed within multifamily, and densities start at 15 units per acre and up. So we start drilling down into the residential zones, we start getting a little bit picture of what we have within our residential zoning. So 46% of our Everett planning area is currently zoned for single-family residential purposes. So there's five zoning districts currently for single-family, and in multifamily, there's 9% of the area is designated for multifamily. So so over half of Everett's planning area is designated for what you kind of consider is primarily or solely, you know, primary focus is residential. And in the multifamily zone, we also have five zones, so we have 10 different zoning districts to cover our residential zones. So some of the big policy questions as we rethink the residential zones, first kind of looking at is some economic issues and housing affordability. And so some of these things are, people recognize it, but when you start looking at the numbers, then it becomes a little bit startling, is that income since 1990 to 2017, excuse me, went up 92%, but housing costs went up 162 to 173%. And so that growing gap between income and housing is part of the affordability issues that this community and many communities throughout Washington are facing. Whether the housing affordability has a say in this is that, one of the things that's really interesting is that the household type that, you know, the type of household that is residing in Everett is strikingly different from the rest of Snohomish County. 44% of the households in Everett are non-family households. It means they're not not related to each other compared to outside of Everett and Snohomish County, 29%. And so some of that may be related to housing affordability, it might be related to housing types, might be different things that is causing that number there. So as we look at a little bit more, some of the housing affordability, looking at single-family home sales from 2000 to 2018, pretty astounding, the rise and fall of single-family home prices, but where we are right now is on another steep increase, is that last year, the single-family home median sales was $390,000. And in order to afford $390,000 a home, you basically have to earn around $100,000 of income. And that is not what we're seeing within our community, is that the Everett's median income is is less than $55,000. And so to afford a single-family home, you're going to have to have twice that household median income here. So in large measure, the median income could afford the housing prices that were back in 2010 at the bottom of the recession is really where it was at. So the picture is not all that much better on the rental side either. The market rent, according to some recent Zillow things, is around $1,500 a month. And what this shows is based on the size of the household is different income, so how much would these folks at these income ranges can afford in housing costs compared to it, and so one person. What you can see is this line right here, is that there's very few households that really can afford this. It's basically if you're earning really at that $55,000 a year median income, you can earn it, and some of the 80% can get get close to that, or they can find things under the market, average market rent. But what the rent is, the biggest issue is really is the lower-income households are greatly affected by the cost of rent and the ability to find housing within this area. So this map is looking at low-income housing groups, and if I can figure out how to zoom in here, is that looking at some of the recent census data and lay that over our land use plan, the areas in the hatching here are what's identified as kind of low income, is those households that are earning less than $50,000 per year in household income. What you can see is that that the pattern of the low-income households is in large measure following the pattern of where multifamily and commercial zoning is. So it's not too shocking that that's probably the case, but but it is a little bit illustrative of some issues in the discussion, I think, that we need to have, is that really is that the economic issues throughout the city are really not balanced, is that we definitely have lower-income neighborhoods in certain areas, and they tend to be along our multifamily and commercial corridors. So part of the questions kind of framed up for you is, you know, first off is, you know, should the city find ways to increase homeownership? And one of the statistics that I didn't put in there was that homeownership is on the decline within the city. We're currently about 45% of the housing stock is home ownership, and 65 or 55% is rental. And so that number has been changing, so there's more rentals now than there were 20 years ago, and so that number is going more and more towards rental. And then second is looking at some of those things like the economic or lack of diversity in some areas, and should there, should the city really find some ways to ensure some more economic diversity in neighborhoods? And how does zoning kind of help or hinder that economic diversity within the neighborhoods? So before we go on to the next section, I thought I would stop and see if anyone, commissioners, had any reaction to this kind of discussion.
Thanks, David. How do the numbers that you showed for Everett compare to other cities in Snohomish County and as well as cities in King County outside of Seattle?
In which category?
I guess any one of them, but what makes me, what jumped out at me is your single-family sales graph there. My guess is this is probably at the low end of most other communities, especially in King County, but likely in Snohomish County as well, is that?
In terms of cost, what the median price is?
Yes.
In terms of cost, that's probably true. And also in terms of the pattern here of what's happening, it's probably similar pattern though in terms of
Sure, that makes sense.
The way it dropped and the way it's increasing, so.
And then looking at the allocation of land, 46% for single-family homes and 9% for multifamily, that's the land area, I'm assuming, correct?
Correct.
So how does that change if we look at it based on number of possible dwelling units? And if we add in zoning classifications like urban mix that can accommodate residential?
Yeah, so those are just looking at the land use classifications that are multifamily and single-family, so it does not, so there definitely is a lot more land base that allows residential. So as you note, so all the, all of our commercial zones in our downtown, you know, the urban mix, all those allow residential as well. So there's definitely more land that can accommodate residential than just in those numbers, kind of thing. How does that equate to other communities? I don't know. Probably in terms of buildable capacity, I know that when the city did that back in 2012 to 2015, we had all those numbers. And, you know, clearly, the single-family areas are not going to create the capacity that multifamily areas are. And I think that most of the single-family areas are also, don't have a lot of capacity for additional growth either, because a lot of that's already built out.
Sure, yeah, it just, it struck me that those percentages, while accurate, probably don't tell a very clear story about the capacity to accommodate for dwelling units of either type, maybe more so for the single-family, but less so for multifamily, given the level of density you can put on the land area.
Correct, yeah. In terms of overall numbers that, when you look at growth forecasts and allocation in the large numbers that we have to accommodate, without a doubt, most of that's going to be within your multifamily and your commercial and your mixed-use areas like that. That's definitely the areas that have the most capacity in terms of both density but also building heights allow for that to happen.
I mean, I think your slides show that there is a, there is an affordability issue, but I'm not sure it's with the housing side, it could be with the income side.
That is correct. In Snohomish County, Everett has the second lowest median household income. Darrington is just slightly lower, but every other city and the unincorporated area of Snohomish County have higher median household incomes. I think that for the county as a whole, it's probably close to $70,000, whereas Everett's median household income is around 55.
Yeah, and so the city is looking at, you know, other things in terms of, when you think of community development and you think of housing strategy, I mean, you know, the issue of income is definitely part of that. But really, part of our discussion too is kind of looking, okay, now let's look at the zoning component of that. What is zoning contributing to any of these issues? And what can we do with the zoning that that may help address this, this part of it? It doesn't mean you give up on the income side of it, because clearly, the income is not keeping up with housing costs. And and I doubt that you're gonna, that that graph of of sales of the single-family homes, you know, unless there's another recession, I would imagine that line is going to continue that same path for a while.
I had a few of those same thoughts when I was listening to it. I guess, looking at some of these numbers and trying to, I guess the question I have is, to what, what you just indicated, to what extent is zoning the issue as opposed to other forces? And some of these numbers, some of these things that just kind of compare, what's going on in Everett, I don't know if that really helped, it doesn't help me necessarily to compare or to be able to kind of tell, is this a zoning issue, or is this, are there economic factors, other things unique maybe to Snohomish County, Everett being the largest and kind of the only really, I guess, if I'd say dense urban kind of, you know, city in Snohomish County. So a question I have is kind of, how does, how do some of these things compare to other places like maybe Seattle, which obviously is a lot larger, but at least it's a kind of the metro, or just maybe other areas, other cities and other counties that might be kind of comparable to Everett rather than other cities in Snohomish County, which in my mind, aren't necessarily comparable to Everett, even though they're in the same county could be. So I guess for me, the question I have is the same question, how do we parse out what impact zoning might be having on this as opposed to other things? I don't know that, I mean, this information is very, it's very interesting and raises lots of questions, but again, to that aspect of just pulling out the zoning aspect, I don't, I guess I don't feel like I necessarily, it would come away feeling, oh, well, if we did such tweak zoning this way or this way, it could, you know, make an impact.
It is a very complex issue. It's not just one or two factors that influence the cost of housing in a community. And of course, it's a regional housing market that we're in, what happens within our county, whether, what type of developments happen elsewhere affect our ability to grow here in Everett. So for example, a lot of the greenfield areas to the north of us, which are now, Marysville in particular, they're booming because they have a lot of raw land that's easily developed. We are pretty much out of vacant land, and most of our growth in the future is going to be through redevelopment, which is much more costly and requires, you know, somebody with a lot more patience than to acquire small parcels, assemble them together, tear down old houses and build bigger buildings, whether those are mixed-use buildings or multifamily buildings. And so to the extent that developers are able to build elsewhere more profitably or with less hassle than through redevelopment, we're seeing that is happening. There's also market preferences in some areas for the single-family detached housing, which we just don't have the amount of vacant land in Everett to accommodate much more of that. The Simpson property down on the Riverfront is the last big single-family neighborhood that we will see in Everett. Even if we were to annex into some of our urban growth area, most of those neighborhoods are already developed, not much in the way of undeveloped, single-family land within our planning area. And so, you know, I appreciate the question, there isn't really, you know, an obvious zoning answer, but, you know, we're going to look at all these questions in a bit more detail with the housing strategy that we're working on with, you know, at the City Council and Mayor's request, and so we're just touching on the zoning part of it, the land use side of it, there are other factors too that influence supply and obviously demand.
I think my takeaway was similar in terms of when I had read through this, I thought that it indicated an issue with income more so than an issue with housing. But at the same time, I think it is really prudent that we're looking at code issues and making sure that Everett does stay an attractive place to develop, and looking at how we can encourage, you know, the streamlining of this light rail system, I think is critical for that. But it's also a hopeful thing that we have developers who are clearly very interested in investing in Everett despite maybe a larger expense. And we have a huge riverfront project that should be beginning pretty soon. I think that that indicates that developers still find Everett to be worth, you know, investing in and even over easier, pray. I think that we're still contenders, but I do think that focusing on issues of, you know, the light rail and 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 streamlining the code so that development has a clear path, even path, even, even if it is developing brownfields or redeveloping existing sites, I think that it will make us attractive for, for developers. That was my, my takeaway from it.
So tease out a few of the questions that I had a little bit to kind of drill into a little bit there. So one of them is, so, you know, a map like this shows again the lack of economic, you know, or concentration of lower income within certain areas. So I mean, are there some strategies to that zoning-wise to, you know, and it's probably not going to change in terms of the majority of a neighborhood changing or something like that, but are there some, I mean, what do we do with zoning in some of these single-family areas that are, makes it so that low-income families can't get into those neighborhoods? And should we try to find ways to get low-income folks integrated into other neighborhoods?
That seems like a very complicated policy question, high-level policy question.
We're starting out with.
I guess my initial response is that I would also like to see maybe some, some way, and this is an equally unanswerable, maybe rhetorical type question, you know, instead of, again, is it an issue of changing the zoning so that low-income people can move into other areas? Or finding some ways to lift up these people who are lower income so that they can then move into these, these, these other areas? I don't know. Is it chicken, chicken and egg kind of?
Yeah, and if I gave you the number of households, of how many households you're gonna have to lift up, you would be overwhelmed.
Oh, I, I'm sure. Which, which kind of comes back to the question, is this, is this a zoning issue? Is this just a general economic issue that maybe, you know, is happening in Everett, but not necessarily unique to Everett? I mean, there are.
Well, the, for example.
There's a lot of inequity in our, nationwide.
I think when I look at the map, I, the thing that stands out to me in terms, if you're, if you're just looking at the, the overlay of, of the low income, it's, it seems more than anything else that it just lands on those transit corridors so heavily. And so I think if we were to think of not necessarily ways of, you know, expanding it so that the low-income overlay covers more ground, but, but actually making it so that the transit corridors, and it makes sense that the low-income would cluster towards the, the transit, but making those transit areas a really rich and more desirable place to be, you know, you don't necessarily need to pull those people away from transit, but adding more services and making, making it such that the code really encourages more of a mixed-use development so that there are more stores and services and things for low-income families and, and making it just more enjoyable to be there overall. Because I do think that rather than segregating low-income from other incomes, you just, if you're making it more attractive for anyone to live there, making it more convenient to develop those kinds of properties along the transit corridor, that's what makes sense to me in terms of approaching it from a code perspective. So I, I would maybe look at enhancing language with relation to multifamily projects and, and mixed-use projects specifically to make those transit corridors more vibrant and more attractive for all kinds of families.
Yeah. Yeah, that's kind of the next segment that we kind of focus in on transit stuff. So yeah, you know, again, I'm, I'm gonna try to tease out some things, how do you folks get some discussion? So, so I'm trying to provoke you a little bit, so I apologize.
I don't feel provoked.
With these questions, but so for example, you know, single-family zoning that has exclusion to other housing types. You know, we had a huge discussion, what, two years ago about accessory dwelling units and where they can go, things like that. So infill units, you know, so smaller units that could be another housing type that goes into an area that could have either a lower rent or could be an ownership pattern type of thing. So those are, they're not going to deal with, you know, Commissioner Finch about the big picture, about large numbers of folks, but those are potential opportunities that, for some infill that could have, have a lower cost and get an entry for folks into neighborhoods and more integrate them.
I think that the AD units, ADU units are particularly valuable to a community such as ours because it integrates another layer of not just density, but a different housing type completely. It's, it's, it's something between an apartment and a house and it, it, it's a more organic way, I think, of incorporating a different housing type and a different income scale into an existing fabric, in an existing neighborhood. I think oftentimes people in those neighborhoods react better toward that kind of housing type because, because it's smaller, but also because it doesn't have the monumental impact that maybe a new apartment building would have. The control over who's living there goes to an existing homeowner, you know, and they're thinking about their neighbors, they're thinking about that fabric already. So I think that, you know, while I think bigger projects and mixed-use projects along those transit quarters makes a lot of sense, I think projects like ADUs also make a lot of sense for those neighborhoods.
So smaller-scale housing type within those areas and larger housing types along the transit.
I mean, it is such a complex thing that we're talking about, but a complex problem just is an opportunity to think of a lot of different solutions, which is exciting too. And I think ADUs certainly have a place in that conversation. I, I think that it's an appropriate way of introducing density into these, into these neighborhoods that are, you know, already of an established scale and architectural style and character.
David, with, with the condominiums now available and, you know, that marketplace is going to come back, are those going to, would that fit into your question?
It, it does, kind of getting back into the homeownership type of question because, you know, maybe it's not a single-family home, but it's a different type of ownership. And so, you know, the possibility of, of condominiums or townhomes, so, you know, again, I think the homes on the riverfront sold out, you know, quite quickly, you know, is a very popular product and so, things like that. So, yeah, I think that could fit into it, yeah.
And is there, I mean, it's been so long ago, what, twelve, fourteen years since they built any condos, not just here, but everywhere in the state? There's probably no data that we could look at that would show us what that would.
There's about, the only place you'll see condos built recently are in Seattle and a few up, upscale markets like Kirkland and, I don't think there's even been much in Edmonds, but that.
That's really not.
Yeah, that's not the same probably market that we would see here in Everett, but with the just recent change in the state law that should make building condominiums less challenging for a developer, they won't get sued as easily, they raise the, or change the standard for the, the faults that you had to find to, in order to successfully sue a condo developer, hopefully will result in more condominium development at more affordable price points in Everett than we have seen, we just haven't seen any condos in the last, like you say, ten, fifteen years. And so, you know, when we get into some of the building types that we've seen in downtown and the five-over-one type of multifamily, if that becomes profitable for a developer to do with condominiums rather than a for-rent format, then I'm sure we'll see, you know, it just takes one to get, be successful for others to follow, but somebody's got to prove the market. And so that could do a lot to, probably not a lot, it'll probably slow the, the increase in the rent, rental format, rental tenure housing, but because we won't be really seeing much in the way of single-family detached product built in Everett in the future, most of our housing, probably eighty, ninety percent of it's going to be multifamily. If some of that can be condominium, then that, not only does it, you know, tend to put people into housing longer than in a rental situation, and that goes toward community stability, but it also really creates a way for people, if they can get in on that condominium, to grow equity that they don't as, in rental housing. And so that might help some of the economics that we were talking about as people stay in condominiums, if there's a, a market for them and the value keeps going up.
Thank you. So the, so let's say we decided that we thought that that should be available in this corridor. What, what is it due for, for condo conversions? Because a lot of those that were built, you know, got washers and dryers and things in apartments, I should say, you know, which in the olden days, when we went through this, it was quite expensive to convert an apartment complex because by the time you just added the washer and dryer, you were, you know, ten, twenty thousand bucks with all the plumbing and all that stuff is, well, let me get back to that mic. Will a zone, if, if a zone multifamily is multifamily apartment only or is multifamily, could they convert?
Yeah, they can convert to a condo. We have no rules that would prohibit conversion to a condo currently and hasn't been part of the discussion. So, yeah, so the change to ownership is there. One of the things that we did just add was the unit lot subdivisions in the metro area, which is a townhouse style of development. Again, so it's a, you know, attached housing, but it's single-family ownership in that case. So it's kind of, probably the assessor's office classifies it as multifamily, but it really is a single-family home, but with attached, attached units.
Thank you.
But, but that's a, as we kind of get into some of the details a little bit later on, the, the attached homes in some of these single-family neighborhoods might be one of those other things to get some more things that might help or give us a little bit of the price point for that.
Well, I think like was talked about the ADUs, it, I mean, a homeowner treats a neighborhood and a community differently than a renter, and I, I don't mean renters are bad, but they're, you know, it's just a different, and it, like Alan said, it raises the income level, so that's hopefully where we get a, a chunk because we only got so much at hand.
All right, if we can move on to the next section, and we can always come back here. So the next section was kind of look at the high-capacity transportation and it's tied to housing and, as you know, that light rail. So we got Everett Station, we got a station that's gonna be at five twenty-six in Evergreen, we have a Boeing Station, Southwest Everett Industrial Center, provisional station at ninety-nine and Airport Road, and then one out in our urban growth area at Mariner, one twenty-eighth. There are stations within our area. Swift Lines runs every, I missed this, what, seven, eight minutes?
Eight to ten.
Eight to ten, somewhere around there. And they just added the Green Line, that just went alive in the last month, and so that's a whole new one that goes from Seaway Transit Center down to Bothell. And we've had the Blue Line for a long time. And then the other Everett Transit Route that has service four times an hour is Route Seven, so that's really the most frequent transit service that we have. But of course, a lot of the routes cross through downtown and so we have it there as well. So as we look at transit and kind of the same lens a little bit of, of what's going on within these areas, we've mapped out these transit corridors and what's a walking distance in the land use. So again, the yellow here is the single-family. All these little black things going out are quarter-mile distance, so it's kind of a normal walking distance for people to walk to transit. That's along the roadway from, from the stop. There, we have kind of a big bubble around where the light rail stations are, so we don't really know exactly where, where that's going to go. And you can see that as you zoom around, a lot of this quarter-mile goes into residential areas, including single-family areas. And so I'll think the next one, I kind of zoom in a little bit closer to down in South Everett and kind of look in a little bit more around the Boeing Station here and the light rail being largely within walking distance of, really of industrial, but then also some multifamily along Casino Road and five twenty-six, this area, but then the Evergreen Way and five twenty-six one. If the station happened to be right at the intersection here, this circle is a quarter-mile and this is a half-mile. And some, it's pretty common for light rail to think about a half-mile walking distance as being something to consider, you know, to think that's a good walking distance because I think light rail is going to be here every four minutes. And so you really don't have to worry about a schedule anymore. You basically, you know, you can walk to your destination and a train's going to be there going either north or south from there. And so, so you can see within these quarters that quite a bit of, of area in the residential zones that we have within that. And then as we start talking about commercial uses, I think we'll, we'll need to also focus in a little bit around the Boeing Station and perhaps a little bit of transition and conversation about that, what's going on in that area. So some of the, the questions here is, you know, is encouraging other housing types, and it kind of gets to Commissioner McGinn's comments earlier about the other housing types and residential densities within walking routes, within walking distance of these routes, support the investment. But one of the other issues that's really happening within a lot of areas is that while it's also really, you would think it's, you know, it's a low-income neighborhoods, but it actually is causing some displacement of low-income households as well because people with more funds find it convenient there, and so there's been some displacement that happens there. So how can the city work to minimize displacement of some of the low-income households as redevelopment occurs within those areas? So with that, I'll stop there and see if there's additional perspectives that folks have on this.
I think the first one's easy. It's that second one, you know, the displacement, because whenever you tear down a thirty-year or fifty-year or seventy-year-old building, most of those are in the B and C class, you know, as far as rental property, ROEs and all that junk. So I, I don't know what the city can do on question two. I, I mean, that's a tough one.
There have been some strategies, particularly, and there are some limits that the local governments can have in the state, but if we happen to rezon any areas, we could look at some, at least a percentage to be mandatory low-income housing. So there are some strategies there, but we have to tie it to an incentive to, to, we have to tie an incentive to make it a mandate, that kind of thing. So we have to give something in return for that.
So you give up the real estate excise tax and?
Yeah, so financial incentives, but we could give zoning incentives, like if we increase the height in the area, in exchange for increasing height, we could require a portion of it to be affordable housing, for example. If we reduce parking, we could require part of it to do that. So there are some strategies that potentially could. So there are some strategies that, uh, potentially could, uh, be, uh, in those areas.
Those types of things wouldn't be considered zoning?
They are considered zoning, yeah, because they, they have to be done in conjunction. So as we look at, uh, you know, say, an area that right now has a five-story height limit, uh, and we look at raising it to eight stories. And so all of a sudden, we're giving additional, uh, development capacity. And so that's a zoning decision. At the same time, as we give that additional capacity, we could require, uh, a portion of the units to be affordable.
And I was thinking about the previous question about, you know, ex- exte- or expanding economic diversity into other areas of the city. And I don't know how you do that, other than to maybe change the zoning from, because it's an affordability issue. And I, I think generally affordability goes, increases with density. So other than allowing greater densities in these areas that are currently single-family, um, areas, I, I don't know how you would go about doing that. And I would imagine that if that, if you did start doing that, it would move out some of the, um, it would, it maybe have some effect on decreasing property values i- in the, in those areas and, and shift, it would just be a shift. It wouldn't be a, uh, you know, a diversity. So it occurs to me that maybe the only way that I can think of to do that is, is the idea of those types of incentives with the, you know, so in this transit corridor, you build a new great apartment complex with, you know, apartments ranging for fifteen hundred dollars a month, but you are required to keep a certain percentage of them in that affordable range so that you, you can kind of enforce that, that diversity kind of that way, through those types of mechanisms. That seems to me like kind of just taking off the, you know, the top of my head about how to do that as far as getting those mixed in the same, in the same location, other than basically turning our single-family, um, areas into multifamily areas, which doesn't really address the diversity issue, I don't think, just, just changes it.
These kinds of conversations seem like a slippery slope sometimes, but I would wonder if it would make sense to, um, open a discussion with, um, some developers who have worked locally, um, because I know that when it comes down to what makes it worth it for them, um, there's a very fine line, you know? Sometimes building another level is cheap if it's wood frame construction. And if they get, you know, twenty-five housing units and a certain percentage of them are low-income, it pencils out. I know parking is always huge, because those are, you know, the concrete levels. Those are the expensive levels. Um, so maybe parking incentives would be a sweeter option for them. I know that that kind of ripples out and affects other things too. But, um, I think maybe a conversation with the developer about, you know, what is realistic and, and, you know, what's going to be, um, a fair compromise? How can we, how can we keep these projects, um, viable, but also encourage the, um, the low-income, uh, incentive and, and incorporate that? Because I, I think that it's always going to come down to the dollar for them. You know, they're, they don't want these communities to be, um, gentrified such that people are pushed out. I mean, nobody wants that, but, um, but the money is, I think, always going to be the thing that speaks the loudest. Um, I'm not a developer. I, I only do, design buildings for developers, so my knowledge of this is a little bit limited. But, um, I, I, I do think that maybe having a conversation like that would be, would go a long way toward, um, determining what kinds of incentives would really, um, pay off the most.
Yeah, when we did Metro Everett, we had a couple, uh, sessions with developers to kind of, uh, test the incentives and things like that as we went through it. And, uh, part of this discussion too is, as we go forth, is there's, uh, there's, you know, again, there's, there's kind of two kinds of incentives. Incentives that are truly optional and incentives that say they're incentives, but they're mandatory. And it's hard to explain, but, uh, so for example, in Seattle, you've, uh, may have read some of the things where they've done citywide rezones recently. And as a, and, uh, they have what they, it was called the, the grand bargain or whatever the term they had, but that was, uh, something where they rezoned everybody. They did more heights and more capacity, but in exchange, there was a mandatory affordable housing fee that went on that, uh, as a part of that. So the only way they could do it is incentivize it by giving you more development capacity, but then they had a fee that was mandatory, it's not an option. So there are kind of two paths in this weird incentive, uh, thing. One is a truly incentive is like our multifamily tax exemption program that the city has. We have an affordable housing, uh, provision to that and, and those units are set aside for twelve years, uh, at certain rates, and they have to set aside twenty percent of the units. And so that's totally, the developer sees that as an option. We've had quite a few units, well, well over a thousand units that have been, uh, built in the city with the multifamily tax exemption. And I'm not sure how many of them were in the, uh, low-income, but maybe quarter of them, units or quarter of the projects, maybe.
Probably more than, probably more than half.
Okay. That took that option type of thing. So that's, so that, that's there and that's along many of these quarters. So all the Evergreen Way, uh, mixed-use area that's currently in effect and, uh, kind of things, so.
Of, of those units, how, do you know how many of them are occupied, those low-income units?
Uh, we do get reports annually from the, uh, property owners of those. Uh, they have to report, uh, to the city and we have to turn that into the state just to, you know, keep people honest, that the, um, the hous- housing units are meeting that definition of affordable. And so we do get the actual, uh, rent and the actual incomes that match so that in the program, the rent charged to the affordable units cannot exceed thirty percent of their monthly income. And in some cases, uh, they've got some, uh, probably some of the non-subsidized units or, I shouldn't say subsidized, some of the non-affordable units, uh, are probably helping to subsidize the lower-income units. But, uh, you know, if it works for the developer to be able to charge that much rent for the non-affordable units, then, uh, that's worth it to them. But we do get that information on an annual reporting basis from the affordable, uh, projects under that program.
Thank you.
And I think the occupancy rate is extremely high.
Yeah.
I know one of the reports I saw, maybe one unit was vacant at the time of the report or something like that, so.
Thank you.
Yeah, one of the interesting things that we've seen in there, uh, one of the, uh, uh, property owners provided the income level for all of their units and had a great mix of incomes from, you know, people making over four hundred thousand dollars a year to people making zero in those buildings. And so, uh, it does, uh, with those incentives, create a, a mix of housing, or excuse me, household incomes within a building, which is also a good thing.
Yeah, and that incentive program is, uh, the incentive is across the whole project, not just the affordable units. So you provide the affordable units, but the incentive goes across. And so that helps, uh, make it online, so. Okay, um, so if you want to move on to the, the more, uh, code simplification, uh, issues, um, so starting to kind of drill down into our current zones. Um, so again, we have the, the group of single-family zones, the group of multifamily zones, and we look at the housing types allowed by, uh, zone. And, you know, you start looking at this and you wonder, why does it take five zones to say, you know, basically the same, same thing in single-family? And why does it take five zones to say the same thing in multifamily? Because the uses are, are largely the same. Uh, and there, there's a few little footnotes, uh, in there, but in terms of the housing types allowed. And when you even look at some of the non-residential uses allowed in those zones, uh, again, the same things, home occupations and hospitals are allowed. Um, and, uh, in the multifamily zones, uh, again, the same, same patterns there where the higher intensity, uh, higher-density, uh, multifamily zone starts to allow, uh, with some conditions, a few of, uh, non-residential type of uses, a little bit more commercial in nature, uh, quite a few conditions, uh, attached to all of those. Uh, but, uh, again, the patterns here are pretty, um, none of, uh, the uses really indicate a need for ten zones, um, um, right now. And so I shouldn't have led that before I gave you the question. So, so the question, can we simplify, uh, the zoning districts if we just look at uses, the residential and the non-residential, so, yeah.
David, do you see the current level of complexity as an impediment to development in Everett?
You know, we, we asked that when we started the metro thing, um, some folks doing some market things. Um, and, you know, their answer was, um, it certainly is complex and it could certainly be a lot easier, but there's, uh, the Seattle code is even more complex and it has a really, uh, it doesn't seem to be an impediment.
So I think one way to look at this is, are there things that we can do to clean up the code and simplify it to make it an easier place to develop in Everett? I think that's a, a, a way to look at, um, why you would undertake this kind of effort. But I don't think that our current code is an impediment to development. I think there are bigger issues at play.
Yeah, I think so too. Yeah, I think that's what we're seeing is it's not an impediment. It's, it's really just how, how can we simplify it both for the, the reader of the code and the, and, which is on both sides of, of the table. It's the staff that has to do it, uh, as well as the public that, uh, has to kind of navigate through that.
So David, the question I'd like to ask before you tear a fence down, you try to figure out why they put the fence up in the first place. I mean, how did we get to the place where there's five within each, five different, I guess, like, zones? I mean, did we start out with one and then found a need for two, three, four, five? Because it was responsive to things that were happening and needs that met? Or, I mean, if we, you know, are we going to simplify, cut down, and then find that we're going to, because of, you know, there's going to be a need to expand again at some point?
I'll talk to the multifamily zones. And the city had, uh, in its nineteen fifty-six zoning code, two multifamily zones, R three and the R four. Had R one, R two, R three, and R four, and that was it. Then, um, somewhere along the line, uh, and the, let me back up. The density allowed in the, uh, R three and the R four were basically the same as they are today. Twenty-nine units per acre in the R three and fifty-eight, double that, in the R four zone. Then, uh, somewhere along the lines around nineteen eighty or so, they had the R five zone, which had no maximum density limits. And so, uh, then we found, uh, when we were going through, uh, some housing discussions similar to this in the eighties, that, um, there was kind of a, a niche missing between single-family and twenty-nine units per acre. So we came up with a lower-density multifamily zone and we came up with some townhouse zonings, the R one A and the R two A. And so, uh, even though those were added to the code, they haven't been applied in very many areas. I'd say the R one A, the R two A, and the R three A zoning that we currently have, there's probably less than twenty acres of that combined in the entire city. Um, and so it, it hasn't been used very frequently. But, uh, it was thought at that time that if we had some more, uh, choices for developers and for neighbors, you would have less objection if it's a lower-density multifamily coming in across the street from a single-family than, you know, if you had the twenty-nine units per acre. Uh, that would probably cause more, uh, resistance on the part of neighbors to accept, uh, a, a rezone than if it were to the R three A, that, uh, twenty units per acre. And so, uh, it just, things have been added over time. Uh, not tremendously successful in, in some cases. The R five, uh, the unlimited density, uh, we've kind of applied that, uh, concept to a lot of zones now. Uh, so most of the R four zoning in the city, uh, well, it, it's been rezoned, uh, urban, uh, under the metro to urban, the UR urban residential. And so there's no density limits in, in the metro area, so.
I gotta, I gotta jump ahead and put the, the slide up because Alan's talking to the next section about development standards. And so this is kind of getting to these, these unique things that are there, um, as part of that.
And so I guess we just, we got very nuanced between these different multifamily zones. And, uh, we expected there to be a greater application of some of the lower-density zones, but that really wasn't the case. We haven't seen a lot of that, uh, on the part of property owners, uh, looking for a rezone to, uh, the lower-density multifamily. And so, um, we created all these tools, but a lot of them were used very seldom.
So, so like in this table here, I mean, the, the difference between twenty units per acre and twenty-nine, I mean, you know, those are, and, uh, you know, and then the, you know, it's kind of a really small nuance between a hundred and fifty square feet per unit to two hundred or a hundred and fifty to a hundred and things like that. And, you know, the minimum lot width and minimum lot area is all the same. Uh, building heights in multifamily is all over the board, but, um, so again, you know, some of these things, uh, and then when you look at the single-family zones, kind of the same thing, um, you know, the, the differences between them are, you know, minimum lot width is fifty feet in all zones except for one, you know? And, uh, so all of a sudden, you have a ten-foot wide or lot, uh, there. Uh, lot coverage is forty percent or thirty-five percent. And, you know, and, uh, you know, um, probably could do some visual things and ask you which one is a forty percent coverage and which one's thirty-five and no one could tell, you know, type of thing. So, you know, again, you know, those are, those are little unique things that happen, uh, in there that you really don't notice. And then, you know, the biggest probably distinguishment, uh, in the single-family is probably on the lot size, where you have one larger lot, zone nine thousand. But then most of the, all these others are at five thousand, with this one's at six thousand. And then some little details, uh, in between for some other, uh, types in there. And so, um, you know, you know, the fifty-foot wide lot here, fifty-foot wide lot here, six thousand square feet versus five thousand. So this is, uh, if I remember my math, it's what, ten feet on the back of the lot? Something like that, so the difference, I mean, is, no one will notice that. I mean, the, those differences are, in terms of neighborhood character, is probably not noticeable. But to have a separate zone for that.
It makes me wonder if maybe, I don't know where these numbers come from here. Uh, uh, you know, a review could be done. I mean, do these still make sense today for the densities we're dealing with and for the types of houses people are building and, and what we're, we're doing? I mean, I don't have a concept of really, but six thousand square foot lot. I can't even really picture what that means versus twelve thousand and nine. Um, does that match up to, I don't know when these were established or if these are kind of universal numbers that cities use or, you know? Is that what we, what we need? I mean, at the end of the day, I think, I would think that what we want is just livable community that people want to be in, that, um, offers a quality of life that is desirable to people, that people want to be here and, um, and does it mean we have to have a nine thousand square foot lot? Could it be, could they be smaller and still accomplish those things? I, I don't know, but, um, you know?
So, yeah, so what are, um, so some of those things, I mean, we've been having some neighborhood discussions. And so some of the things that I've heard so far about those things, about desirable neighborhood has to do perhaps with size of buildings, you know, the character of, you know, the architectural character of buildings, um, you know, front yards having, you know? And again, there's, uh, like in the multifamily, there's a, there is a difference between, uh, these two R three zones. Uh, they have a twenty-foot front setback and these that are more of your, you know, multifamily with ten-foot setbacks, uh, kind of thing. And so, you know, this, this is a pattern of a multifamily that, uh, is, you know, I, I think was intended to start being the transition between single-family and multifamily, because, uh, it would maintain that same rhythm of the streetscape, uh, in those areas, uh, kind of thing. So, but, uh, you know, this tells me that there's a kind of a line somewhere in, in here, but there's not much, uh, difference between, I mean, you know, I, you know, fifty-eight per acre probably came from some standard, some other zoning district in some other city, my guess, is when they started doing the R four zone was a standard that was out there.
So David, what I hear you saying is that in some cases, the nuance does matter because it represents a transition between different types of buildings. And so when you're thinking about, um, simplifying, um, the classifications, so we don't end up right back here, it's important to take, uh, take stock of those nuances.
Correct, yeah. And, and trying to get a- And trying to get a feeling from, from you and from the public are, what are those nuances that are important characteristics? So.
And I think back to our, our beginning discussion, I think that it's important to promote a diversity of housing types in various areas of the city that are appropriate for existing character and promote new character. It strikes me that there's plenty of development capacity in Everett for new and affordable housing types as zoned today, and so I think the challenge is, how do we promote that level of development and create an amenity base that results in a high quality of life for diversity of people?
I think that you said that perfectly. Thank you. That was just right, what he said.
Catherine, you gotta get that in the minutes.
Yeah. Word for word.
Well, this would be another thing that, you know, when you have your developer meetings, because I think as Catherine said earlier, you know, it's got to work for the developer. I mean, it has to, it has to be good and presentable, and, but.
And I mean, developers are always willing to work within that bubble, you know, like what, what do they want? I mean, that's their game. They, they want to build things that people want to, to buy, so, you know, giving them a set of parameters, that's not, that's not the issue. You know, we can tell them what we want, it's just, yeah, with, with respect to the, the cost, that's, that's, that's what it concerns. But I think, I think in terms of code, you know, they'll always find their formula, they'll work within the code, they'll make it work out, they'll make it work out for themselves, but, and, you know, within architectural parameters and, I mean, I, I think that that's, we shouldn't be afraid of laying it out for them in terms of what we require, but, yeah, definitely encouraging a diversity, and, and maybe, you know, maybe we don't have too many types, maybe it's just a matter of refining those types to be very specific to, you know, ADUs, townhouses, single-family, all the way up to, you know, a mixed, a large mixed-use development, but adding layers into those different types to make it very clear and very obvious what, what their purpose really is. Is it possible to give different incentives to the different types? I mean, I, I guess it has to be possible, but, you know, maybe you can make it very, very specific to a mixed-use development, that, you know, you get this incentive if you do this project and you do it in this way, and.
Yeah. And just, you know, recall that we built some of that, like into the parking stuff already, so when we did that last year, so we, we do have incentives to, you know, things like shared parking between, you know, in a mixed-use development, so they can, don't have to necessarily double up the parking, because it's, and things, and, but, but yeah, we can continue to explore those things.
And I, I keep thinking of the Hope Works project that's, that's being built on Broadway, and I think that's a really exciting prototype. You know, it's, it's an exciting project because it adds value to the downtown environment. It's, it's a project that will, you know, encourage the community to come and participate and enjoy it, but also, you know, I think it, it gives back in terms of being attractive, and yet here, it's, it's as affordable as housing gets. It's a fantastic project, and I think, you know, if that, if that kind of model evolved into one of our housing types or categories, I think that that could certainly pave the way, not just for Housing Hope, but for other kinds of developers to do things that are similar, and, and that addresses not only what that looks like and how that affects our city, but, you know, this is a very clear path for that kind of development, and there are other things that we've put into place very wisely, I think, you know, in our metro plan, that have facilitated that, but, you know, they've, they've had to kind of invent that program from scratch, and a lot of work went into that, but if you could borrow some elements from what they've done and apply it to a code program, then, then that might be really helpful.
Okay, great. When you got these setbacks, the difference between twenty backyard and ten backyard, is?
Front yard.
Front yard, excuse me. How does topography fit into that whole equation?
It's just, it's just horizontal dimension from, between the front property line and the front of the building. It doesn't matter if it's sloped or flat, or, you know, sloped sideways or downhill from the street, or up, uphill from the street, it's just the twenty-foot horizontal dimension.
And in a conglomerate part, parcels of property, can you mix it between tens and twenties?
Not.
On the, on the same piece of land?
If you had a big enough piece of property, say in the R four zone, you could, you could do that, but in the R three zone, it's a twenty-foot minimum setback, so you, you would not be able to do that in, on large.
Just thinking there's some parcels of land that are out there that thirty-five percent of it would work for a ten-foot yard, and maybe the other sixty-five would work, but if they do it all twenty, then the math doesn't work because of the setbacks, so that's, that's the only reason my brain was.
And we do have some modification processes, that somebody can propose something that doesn't meet the standard, but the test is, what they propose has to provide a design that's equivalent or superior to what the coded minimums would require.
Okay, thank you.
So do a little visual preference time for you, so, kind of getting to the root of things that you see and things that you like, so, look at the pictures on the screen, and maybe you can kind of think about which ones you think could fit into a single-family zone out of that, and think about why yes or why no in that.
As a designer, I have lots of opinions on this, so I'll, I'll really narrow it down to the thing that always stands out the most to me. It doesn't really and truly matter the size of the building ultimately, and on paper, it always matters to neighbors. If you tell someone that a five-story apartment building is going up in their neighborhood, they're always going to be upset, but after everything is said and done, the layers of scale are always the thing that makes the most difference, because if you look at that little beige number down there at the bottom, it's only two stories, but it looks.
Which one, this one? Or this?
Second from the left. Yeah, second from the left.
This one?
There's, there's nothing really inviting about that, because it's got one sad little covering over the entrance, and that's it. That's, you know, walking by that building, you're going to feel much less comfortable than you would maybe walking next to the one that's right next to it, that's bigger, and yet it has so many different.
So this one here.
Yeah, you know, it's, it's got so many layers. I think that that would feel more approachable, and that would maybe excite neighbors more so than, than the other one. Different scales of windows and different roof treatments, and, you know, the scale overall is much bigger, but it's, I think, more interesting and.
Okay. One was probably originally a single-family home, and it's, so I'll just give you my, my cheat sheet, or you maybe already have it, so, so the top left is essentially a duplex, but it's a single-family condo, and the next two are duplexes. And then we have two triplexes, and then we got fourplex, or the, the older home is five to seven units in a courtyard apartment. So, so the five to seven units fits better than the fourplex because of the, the character of the building.
To me, the two lower corners don't look like they fit into a single-family zone.
So this, this one, the triplex and the courtyard apartments?
Yeah. It might be because of the picture, and you can't see them in scale with the rest of the neighborhood. Just the way it cuts it off on the side, it kind of makes them look like they're huge, but maybe they're not.
David, I would say that the answer to your question is yes, but it depends on the single-family zone, because I don't think all single-family zones in our city are created equal. And so you've got different character of single-family homes in different areas, and that character also changes the closer you get to amenity-rich transit spines and other changes in zoning. So while I think the duplex, second from the left on the top, fits well in the northwest neighborhood, I don't think that the courtyard apartment would fit as well in the exact same location. So I think it, you know, the answer's sure, but it depends.
Yeah. So to you, one of the things is proximity to transit is one of the measurables or something that we can define type of things, so.
It just strikes me that the, the more proximate the site is to amenities, the greater the density that it would support.
So the map that I had about the quarter-mile to transit routes that happened to be in single-family, would some of these housing types fit better within those areas? Is that something that you would be thinking about?
Yes, I think that as it relates to being within that quarter-mile walking radius, you know, the greater-density examples would fit better than, say, the lower-density duplex examples. That's not to say they have no place in that neighborhood, but I, I would expect to see more of the higher-density examples in that quarter-mile distance.
Okay. Any disagreement from other commission members at all on that?
No, and I think, I, I think though that setbacks in the front and the rear do make a difference depending on the neighborhood, but also how those setbacks are treated in terms of landscaping, and, you know, it, it would be, I think, completely inappropriate to see parking, for example, in a setback in a residential neighborhood, but I think the thing that softens the effect of that courtyard apartment is the courtyard. It's very inviting, it's very green, I think even if the scale was inconsistent with the neighbors, that, that green element would probably cover a lot of, of ground in terms of integrating it a little bit better.
Yeah, it seems like the triplex with the driveways and the garages there is a...
That would be really harsh.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Compared to the courtyard apartment, I mean, probably.
Right.
I'd probably choose the courtyard apartments next to me before the driveway with the garages, but.
Agreed, and, and just in terms of imagining the kinds of activity that happen in those, in those neighborhoods, you know, there's a lot of walkers, and there's a lot of people who walk with small children or dogs, and, you know, covering, covering that much ground of pavement where you're worried about people driving in, and, you know, as opposed to walking past that courtyard where it also seems very pedestrian, it's, it's a very sharp contrast.
Okay, great. I got another, I haven't looked at these for a while, so I got another set of, so images here, so more, more ones that question whether they would fit. And then these, the ones at the top are townhouses, so kind of getting back to a little bit of the concept of potentially ownership in those. Doesn't necessarily have to be ownership, but definitely is, creates that opportunity because of separation there. And the ones down below are cottage housing, so they're kind of a planned development, a smaller housing.
I think that these all strike me as being appropriate neighbors in, in an existing residential setting. Very, very different, but I think both of them as types have a place in a, in the kind of residential neighborhoods that we have. Again, they both seem to encourage walkability. I think that, you know, the townhouses are encouraging more density, but they, they kind of have an appropriate face for the job. They wouldn't necessarily seem completely out of place next to a typical single-family Probably owing again to the kinds of scale breakdown that they show, you know, there's, overall, the massing is big, but you have individual doorways going into these smaller units, and I think that that makes them much more approachable.
I can see these housing, being appropriate, you know, as a buffer in between institutional uses and single-family homes, for example. I don't see this density as appropriate, for example, next to Legion Memorial Golf Course. The pitchforks are coming out if you go that direction, is my guess. So again, I think that these represent a transition in scale, probably appropriate for some areas, but not for all areas of single-family neighborhoods.
Yeah, I would agree with that. I think that, I mean, calling that, putting that in a single-family zone, I mean, just it seems like a non-sequitur. Those aren't single, I guess those wouldn't really be single families, so maybe a different name would have to be, for, not that they, not that there's anything wrong with those, that they don't look, they don't look nice in the appropriate place, but I still envision a single-family zone as looking, for the, I'm just envisioning most of the areas that I think of in the city, in the old neighborhood areas, other than the transitional areas, just look different than that, and it would, it would be, it would be, it would be a big change.
All right, well, I think that's the end of the show, so.
How, how do you? I mean, he brings up a good point, because as the first developer goes in and takes down four houses and puts up the townhomes in the middle, that's going to change that neighborhood. And the next, you know, you don't, you don't know when the next one's going to come, come along, but the next one would be built, something that's going to be somewhat compatible, so, you know, to get some of those neighborhoods to break up, you know, and get rid of those houses that have been used, their lifetimes over, I don't know what you call it, but, you know, where it makes sense to put the properties together and do something, so that, that's kind of hard too, to, you know, those first guys in.
Yeah, I would, it would seem to me, if something like this came in, it would start shifting that, the feel of that neighborhood from what we generally think of as a single-family, what I think of as single-family, but, you know, maybe that's also the way of the future, I don't know what, you know, there's a, a new generation coming up that maybe has different needs, that, that, leave it to Beaver neighborhood is not what they want, not what families of the future are going to want.
Right.
So I'm not saying that's a bad thing, but I just think that, I think it's a different thing.
Yeah, no, that, that east side of... Yeah no that that east side of Broadway is an example where a lot of those homes are could be redone.
I guess that's another question is what is the path to cottage housing for example I mean what what would be um the route to even going about planning a a project like that in an existing neighborhood you'd you'd have to acquire different properties in the same block um you would presumably you'd have some kind of um public comment period even addressing that kind of development it'd be a pretty lengthy process I'd imagine before something like that just popped up in the middle of a neighborhood um.
Yeah that's um so having these discussions about what people kind of want and where they want to see it is will allow us to kind of go to the next step of start framing kind of the process and and things but so cottage housing for example is under our current code isn't allowed in single family zones at all it's not even an option so that's why kind of teasing out these questions you know what are some things are there and then um so so if if this is an option to consider then what under what kind of conditions and what kind of process so uh so certainly we could have a um this as a option where it goes through a public process and discussion but uh clearly I mean most of the cottage housing developments are in larger pieces of property it takes some assembly uh kind of thing and I'm not sure that that there's many opportunities uh there's probably a few opportunities um within the city now that you know we think citywide uh that's out there uh in single family zones that uh this could be there and whether or not anyone wants to do it I mean no one's knocking on their door although we did have about two years ago I think someone was was doing a community and they ended up in Marysville or something like that uh kind of thing but.
What is it um what are the qualities of the cottage housing development that are specifically prohibits them from being developed in a residential?
Just as housing type excuse me as a housing type it just uh not um or development type it's not allowed in single family zones under current code but you know looking at the scale of the houses they're probably smaller than you find in a lot of single family zones it's just that they're instead of each on its own lot it's more of a communal arrangement with common open space and.
They they tend to be packed a little more densely I think than than a typical.
They're usually smaller fifteen hundred square feet uh might be a maximum and you don't have garages you might have off to one side uh a parking lot or parking under carports or something like that that uh uh so you didn't have a garage dominating the architecture of the front or the side of the building.
And there's there's sort of a um a park-like atmosphere is from from the ones that I've seen I I where you yeah you sort of meander through the site in in a landscaped.
It's usually kind of built as a purposeful community uh type of thing it's uh and there's some kind of association and quite often there's a community building associated with them things like that uh they're they share in common areas and stuff like that uh density is a little bit higher than traditional single family I think they uh usually ask for a few more units but not radically more kind of thing but so. Well with the so with the next steps um so um probably actually in a month your first meeting in in uh June one of the ideas is that we'll come back with some initial framework of some concepts so a little bit more meat on the bones uh here and say take some of this discussion and the discussion that we're getting with uh we're going to city council um uh May fifteenth next week all right uh kind of talk about the project but uh kind of thing and so we'll we'll come back with with some concepts and so we'll start laying out some things and just uh you know getting some feedback on that so we'll kind of look at uh some some framework for some new zoning things and you know real real rough you know real conceptual level we're gonna go from way up here to a little bit lower uh we'll continue to kind of have this dialogue and uh and then uh later in June we're gonna come back with a commercial discussion uh with you about uh commercial and industrial zones uh type of thing so month of June we'll do a little rethinking zoning uh we'll continue this so. Thank you for your time.
You too. Enjoy the sunshine.
So is there any other business?
No.
Okay I guess we're adjourned. We're adjourned.